Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting on June 7, 2021. We are being recorded by MCAM to be broadcast on Verizon and Comcast as well as livestream on the MCAM page. Can I ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on, can I ask for a moment of silence for James Thomas, who recently passed? Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal, did you want to say anything about Mr. Thomas?
Well, Jim Thomas was our town moderator a couple times, the last time in the 2000s, and he presided over the biggest town meeting ever held in Massachusetts, the one about the casino here in Middleborough. And Jim was a tremendously intelligent individual and a real straight shooter. I mean, Jim told it like it was, and he really didn't much care what anybody thought about it. I had tremendous respect for Jim, and he'll be missed.
Thank you. Neil? Does any member of the board have anything under unanticipated? Any member of the public under unanticipated?
My name is Paula Fay. This is my sister Diane Fay. We are owners of a manufactured home located in the community known as Oak Point. Our lot number and address is 8309 Oak Point Drive. We appeared here this evening before you, the Board of Selectmen, to provide you with something in your role as the rent board, a request, and it's in accordance with Section 5 of the Town and Middleborough's Rules and Regulations for Mobile Home Park Accommodations, Rents, and Evictions. And we're providing you this evening two checks, one in the amount of $300 and one in the amount of $100, to initiate a general rent adjustment in the community known as Oak Point. So we've just given Colleen two checks. We've given her the letter. We've given you the form. We've also provided you with dates where we would not be available. So obviously, to schedule public hearings, we want to make sure you don't pick those days, as we would say.
Yes, I will take a look at that and get back to you as early as tomorrow.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Colleen, did we just schedule that for another meeting?
Yes, we'll have to do a little notice.
Okay. Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, moving on. Any board member have anything under announcements and recognitions? Any member of the public? Moving on. Can I get a motion to approve, I'm sorry, a motion for the minutes from 5:24, 2021, as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion to vote to authorize the chairman or her designee, which is myself this week, to sign the warrants for week ending 6/12/2021?
So moved.
You have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Can I get a motion for the discussion and nomination for a member of the Board of Selectmen to serve on the MMPO, the Massachusetts Metropolitan Planning Organization? Do you get a motion? We can do a discussion?
So moved.
A motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
For discussion? The MMPO is a panel. It ties itself into SERPAD. There's an opening on this. If someone resigns from this, if any other member would like it, they can have it. Otherwise, I will take that up if you elect me to.
Who resigned, Mr. Chair?
No, it was no one from this town. It was other towns.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chair, would I nominate Mark D'Amene?
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Nomination? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to new business. B, can I get a motion for the discussion and nomination for a member of the Board of Selectmen to serve on the Plymouth Colony Advisory Board?
So moved.
You have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Selectmen Battistini has expressed interest in continuing with this group. He was on it now. He'd like to be here for another year. Someone wants to make that motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion on a vote to appoint Rich Young to the Old Colony Elder Services for the term from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Colleen, were there any other letters of interest on that? Or just Rich Young? Okay, no other interest. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion on the vote to approve and sign the Thrush-Follow Lock Five Conservation Restriction? So moved. Can I get a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay. Ms. Cassidy?
Good evening. Tricia Cassidy, Conservation Agent for the town. And just to go over this, the reason why this conservation restriction is before you this evening is because the town, in exchange with another parcel conservation owned, we purchased this property with community preservation funds. So with that, you're required to put a conservation restriction on any property purchased with those funds. This is an almost eight-acre parcel that was to be a retreat lot in the subdivision, and it directly abuts the Pratt Farm Conservation Area and has trails, existing trails, that connect into the Pratt Farm. So that's...
Anyone on the board have any questions for Trish? Okay, we already have a vote and a second, right? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Letter E, can I get a motion to vote to approve and sign the Harvest Wood Subdivision Conservation Restriction?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Cassidy?
So again, this is a conservation restriction that the Middleborough Conservation Commission has voted to hold. The owner will still be Maroni Contracting, I believe. And the reason why this conservation restriction exists is because of the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. So this is required, I believe it was eastern box turtle was the species that's being protected there. So they have all their signage up. They have a split rail fence demarcating in back of the house lots where the restriction begins, so hopefully it will remain protected.
Okay. I apologize, I neglected public comment on these. Any public comment on the Harvest Wood Subdivision? Okay. We have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to F, can I get a motion to vote on a Chapter 61A, 120 Thomas Street?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second for discussion.
Motion to second for discussion. Mr. Rosenthal?
I believe that the planning board voted to pick this property up, and the Conservation Commission voted against. Am I right in that?
Exercise their right of first refusal. Hi, Trish.
Yes, the Conservation Commission voted not to recommend for you to exercise your right to purchase under Chapter 61A. I mean, I think it's Chapter 61, actually. It's, I think it's under Forestry, yeah. So we're, you know, obviously pursuing the Picone Farm right now, and that's kind of all we can handle right now.
There's a letter here from the town planner, excuse me, Leanne Bradley. It says, "Please be advised the planning board during their meeting on Tuesday, May 18, 2021 unanimously voted to recommend the select board exercise their right of first refusal, preserving this 70-acre parcel, which currently abuts town-owned land." Right. Bob, do you have any comment on this?
I don't.
You have from the public?
We can't afford it, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Brian Givernoni, just a guy from 89 Rocky Meadow and loves this farmland that's out here. If the board would like to, they could see if the planning board may be able to reach out to others that they might know of and maybe table this item to a subsequent meeting if the timing is okay. That way there, you might be able to get a little input from the planner and the planning board. Maybe there's some money out there elsewhere that's looking tight right now, but it is a beautiful parcel of land.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. D'Amers? Can anyone provide any input on what the actual purchase price is? Because the purchase and sale says $900,000, and at the top of this says 1.15 million. Is there an actual...
I don't have that answer, Mr. D'Amers. I have the same packet you have. I wish I had more information.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rosenthal?
I do know that there was a house lot, a house that was taken out of this, and that I believe the planning board, part of their idea was that we could sell off some of the farmase and still come up with enough to retain this and have it cost us nothing or something like that. I actually would like to put this off and have the town planner come in and more or less present to us what they had in mind.
Mr. Chair, the reason why I'm asking is because the separate accepted portion of property that contains a single family dwellers, it says 350,000. So the math is off somewhere there, so I'm just trying to get a final answer on that. So, yeah, I'd be in favor of the planning board kind of reviewing this and seeing if they can come up with any funding solutions.
Mr. Rosenthal wants to remove this second. We can back this up.
What's that?
Do you want to take back your second and remove the motion? Or do you want to continue with this?
Yes, no, I'll take back my second, and I'd just like more information. Obviously, we can't just afford to buy every piece of wonderful land in town, but if they have a plan, I'd like to know more about what that plan is.
Is that how we do that, Colleen?
Yeah, I'll reach out to the management department about cost of that.
Would Nate have to rescind his motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay, so now we're back to square one?
Yes.
We have a motion to table it? Or we continue?
Yes, we have the discussion, the discussion, and Stan.
Okay.
Louise Derry Wells.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Derry Wells, go ahead.
Mr. Chairperson, Louise Derry Wells, 9 Chestnut Street in Middleborough. It's just come to my general attention, I think other residents in Middleborough as well, that we've had a series of opportunities now to grab hold of some of these 61A options on some prime pieces of land. I'm very pleased that we're working so hard on the Picone Farm, but it grieves me that so many other parcels seem to be coming up and coming and going. And I really think we need some vehicle. I'm not well-educated on these matters of how to put money aside for land. I think we need a land bank aside from CPA funds and other sources outside of Middleborough because we're always leaning in on Wildlands Trust or the Nature Conservancy and having to go through all sorts of legalities in order to be able to affect those means of getting land. I think we need to have a land bank in Middleborough, even if we ask the voters in the fall whether people would individually like to contribute to that and put that aside as part of what we give the town. Maybe people who are making their wills, I'd be happy to put aside a few thousand out of my will so that Middleborough can have some money for land when these opportunities come up, because they won't come again. You know that. In the same way, I think we need to have fewer opportunities for mobile home parks and more opportunities to put land aside. And I know that down the road, the state wants to use some of these conserved land spaces for future development. You know, none of us are naive about these things, but for now, it's nice to try to make that happen. And I would love some thinking in the direction of creating a land bank, maybe through the town meeting. I don't know how you do that, but I hope we do something like that. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Cassidy?
Hi, I'd like to answer some of that.
Sure.
So I'm definitely on the same page with Louise as far as protecting land. You know, it's half of what we do in the Conservation Department on a daily basis. You know, the other half is dealing with wetlands, the wetlands regulations. However, community preservation, that was created in Massachusetts, and it actually was modeled after the Cape Cod Land Bank program. So it was a mechanism, it's a tool to use, obviously, such that the Cape Cod Commission uses, you know, land bank funds to protect land. And we do work with all the partners we can. We reach out to the Wildlands Trust. We work with Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. We work with Division, Department of Conservation and Recreation, Mass Audubon, Trustees and Reservations.
Department of Ag.
What's that?
Department of Ag.
Department of Ag. And so there's many, you know, groups that we try to work with. Now there's the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. We received the planning grant for that, and so now we're an MVP community. However, sometimes these land protection projects, the pots of money don't always coincide. Sometimes they are conflicting in their mission, like with the MVP program. I was looking at that for one of the land purchases we're looking at, and it conflicts with Mass Department of Ag. So, you know, maybe one portion could be that pot of money or in another portion, but they can't coexist. And you can't sometimes get state money on top of state money. It has to be, yeah. So it does become complicated, and I'm totally with you. Doing this for, you know, over 20 years, it's a challenge. And the money, even though the state is funding more, it's still not enough. We're still trying to catch up. You know, when you have a property like the Shobo Farm, which I would love to protect, $24 million, how do you compete with that as a town? That's a quarter of our annual budget. So that's all.
So, Mr. Chair, through you to Conservation, Tricia Cassidy, there's nothing to defend by our Conservation Department in terms of their efforts to acquire land. They do a fabulous job. I have no critique of their efforts whatsoever, but I do think CPA is limited in the fact that it has to fund a number of different kinds of community projects, from housing to other sorts of things, not just conservation of land. And I think giving individuals the right in Middleborough to put aside parts of their estate or to give monies to, we could build up a lot of money in a short period of time and not have to worry about some of these hoops that we all have to jump through to be able to affect these purchases. I think people in Middleborough would be proud to do that. So it's just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Brad Givernoni again. One of the items that, when you take land out of this chapter, I always go back to, you guys should have a bona fide purchase and sales with a single price where you guys know exactly what the price is that you can buy it for in front of you if it's there. That's the first item. The second item is, is there may be some creative thoughts that the planning board has come up with. There's 1,835 feet of frontage on Thomas for that piece of property. That's nine 200-foot frontage lots, potentially, that they could form a right off the front of it. And if we worked out a deal, maybe we could form a the front and leave the back or something like that, if we work a deal out with them somehow. Maybe someone would like to do that. Maybe we can, I don't know, give the rest of the landowners sitting way back a little bit free taxes if he gives us the land. I've always said, if we can acquire things with creativeness, maybe there's something there. You never know, if the person's lived there long enough, maybe they want to make the money on the front lots, which probably will get them today, $160,000, $180,000 a lot. You might end up with, they might end up with the money that they need off the farmase. So, because I know that that property, you drive it, everyone's probably familiar with it. They've been out there perking it like crazy. So it looks like they've done a lot of perks already out there. So maybe the planning board does have a thought as to how we could maybe work with them, and maybe not all of 70. Maybe we end up with 40. That'd be great.
Thank you. Any other comments on the Chapter 61, 120 Thomas Street? Colleen, will you speak a little further on the data? Thank you. We get a motion to vote to approve and sign a notice of betterment for Jeffrey Burr, property located at 6 Fairview Street, in the amount of $11,000.
So moved.
We have a motion. Can I get a second? Motion to second. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. A little early for our poll hearing. We'll skip to the town manager report if you have a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You do have in your packet estimated receipts, local receipts as of April 30, 2021, so I'd just like to just quickly summarize some of the highlights. Comparing April 30, 2020 to April 30, 2021, in regards to motor vehicle excise, the town has collected $332,335 more than it had on April 30, 2020. Meals tax is down $43,602. Rooms tax is down $139,240. Obviously, that was impacted by COVID, but now that we are moving out of the pandemic and more people vaccinated, hopefully those numbers will increase. Total cannabis revenue that we have collected in fiscal year '21 from July 1 to April 30 is $230,623. That includes excise tax and 3% of gross sales, and that's basically from one establishment, the ARL Panacea Establishment on Route 484. Building permits are down by $2,000 from this time last year. Plumbing permits are down $5,659. Wiring permits are up $7,826, and health revenues are up $38,402. So that tells us that there is still a lot of building going on in town. No surprise, investment income is down $446,608. So comparing total revenues from April 30, 2021 over April 30, 2020, we have collected $457,920 more than we did a year ago. So we're on target of hopefully exceeding $8 million in local receipts. We estimate it's 6.8 million, so we have, the revenue receipts are looking good, at least at the end of April. I expect May and June will be the same. And just one other item on the town manager report. I have a number of meetings that I had over the last week and a half or so, but I do want to point out that we'll be working with the executive system of the Board of Selectmen and the Director of Economic Community Development to schedule a meeting with our Brandon consultant, General Thinks, which went through the procurement process on June 21. They will be meeting with the Board of Selectmen that night and then take two or three days of meeting stakeholders in the town. Obviously, all of you will be interviewed if you so choose, but they'll be in town the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, I believe. And that's it. Mr. Chair?
Mr. News?
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I think the local receipts have done amazingly well, Bob, considering the constraints that we've experienced. And obviously, with investment income, if it goes up 25% one year, it's not going to do that the next year.
That's right, exactly.
So we're still making money on it.
That's right.
It's just slowed down dramatically.
That's right.
But that's just totally to be expected, as you say, but I think we're doing amazingly say, but I think we're doing amazingly well.
Very well.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're collecting more revenue than we did last year, but like you said, investment income is down. Doing well.
Still too early for a 7:30 hearing. How about, anyone on the board have anything under report on committees, commission, and boards? Anyone from the public on committees, commission, reports on boards?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Givenoni.
I belong to a Selectman Committee called the School Building Committee, which, as everyone knows, the school is open, kids are using it, everything's going on, but work is still ongoing. As you can see, the building is coming down. In fact, there's a camera that is capturing the actual dismantling of the building, which is a good thing, that everyone can see. And as of, we'll know better on Wednesday when we have our update, but as of last month, we were right on schedule for the October completion date, which was the original completion date of the project. One of the items that has come up, I don't know if it came up early, I got here just a touch late, was there's been discussion online, and I got it emailed and texted to me by about four different people, about the track and when the track will, did that come up this evening?
It did not.
It did not. So there's been a lot of talk about the track and what's going to happen with the track and when is it going to be open to the public. So I will bring that up at Wednesday's meeting, and hopefully we'll get some feedback because currently there's a dual ownership of that. The school has control as well as the building committee kind of have control. So we want to make sure that everyone's on board on the same thing. The school is, the building is still under construction as we're dismantling, so there's still danger abound there, and they're still using the facilities. But I would really hope, and I'm sure that the school department is probably, the school committee is probably coming up with some sort of a plan that will allow the public to utilize their $100 million facility, especially the track, which a lot of people used to walk the track when it was unfenced then. But now that it's fenced in, I'm sure there'll be something. Carver did it, other towns and school districts are doing it. So I'm hoping that, I'll bring it up Wednesday to the School Building Committee, there's members of the school there. So maybe we can keep that thing moving, and that way it doesn't get to your desk yet, hopefully didn't get to your desk yet. Thank you.
Andrew will be watching.
What's that?
Andrew will be watching.
Well, I understand, when I, literally, my wife sends me, everyone sends me these texts that are like, I don't even watch that stuff. I don't have time for that. But I understand the question was, is when will it become available? And the question of, is it going to be available? And I believe it will be available. It's just when people are using the facilities, for the school purposes, they wouldn't be available because they're, for safety and security reasons at that point. But what about when they're not using it? Like I said, Carver just built a beautiful track, eight-lane track over there, and they, the public does get to use it. So hopefully.
Was there previous discussion about using the track when you were on school?
No, no, there really wasn't any discussion because it was not something that we were thinking of. It wasn't even on our radar at that point. We were discussing other items specific to the school. Also, the facilities themselves, since we were using the Parks Department for a lot of our events, that they were moving back to the schools. So that was kind of that aspect of it. But there has been no official, that I remember, no official discussion of it. So it'll be something I'll bring up at the School Building Committee meeting on Wednesday. It's scheduled for 5 o'clock. It's a Zoom meeting. It is virtual, and people can participate if they'd like.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Rosenbaum.
Yeah, when we went through the building, which is an amazing building, and just 21st century all the way, I mean, there's no question about it. You know, something we can truly be proud of as a community. But the superintendent of the schools indicated at that time that this was for the community and was going to be used by the community. So I do assume that they'd make every attempt to make the track and whatever else available to the community. Obviously, not when school is in session, but clearly on other occasions. And that would be totally appropriate, and I'm sure it would be extremely much appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenbaum. I would hope the track would be open for the residents with the amount of money that the taxpayers are paying for it. So. I'm sure we'll get our answer. Just a minute.
I mean, the only thing I actually I would add is it's not an uncommon thing to allow the public to use the track. I mean, all the towns I've lived in, that's very common. So I don't see what the problem would be with allowing the public to go there. I mean, they are paying for it, so.
It may not be a problem. We'll just get an answer from either school committee. Mr. Young might be able to comment, or Superintendent Lynch, and we can address it from there. It could be, maybe no problem, so. All right. 7:30, poll hearing. A hearing will be broadcast in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at the Town Hall at Nicholson Avenue, Middleborough, Massachusetts, on Monday, June 7, 2021, at 7:30 PM. For the purpose of discussion, a petition filed by Middleborough Gas and Electric in Verizon, New England Incorporated, to propose the install of new polls, number 46, 47, and 48, on the Pond Beach Street. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter shall appear at the time and please designate him. I declare this hearing open.
Bill Taylor, Middleborough Gas and Electric. Yeah, it's basically just placing three new poles to provide service to a new home under construction on Beach Street.
Any member of the board have any questions? You? You good?
I have no questions.
Okay. Any member of the public have any questions? I entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved. Motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Close the hearing. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. You name it, Mr. Allseth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. But we're still too early for the 7:40. I'm going to jump around to correspondence because we're still early for our next hearing. Any member of the board have anything under correspondence? No. Mr. Chair, item number two. Mr. Demers?
Yeah, I just read a little email exchange, and then this memorandum from the Conservation Committee thanking Chris Peck for all the work he's doing. So I thought it was really a nice thing to see town departments working together.
Do you want to read the letter into the record or no?
No.
No?
No.
Ms. Rosenbaum?
Why don't you read it?
I'm just asking if you have anything else. I'll read it if not. You good? There's a letter from Ms. Cassidy to Chris Peck. It says, "The Conservation Commission would like the Select Board to know that Chris Peck, EPW Director, has been exceptional in assisting with the Commission over the years in many situations, and would like to acknowledge that in writing here. The Conservation Commission is very appreciative of how Mr. Peck and his staff has assisted in the following situations: taking trash, large appliances off of conservation land off Plymouth Street, cutting and taking away caterpillar-infested tree at Pratt Farm, placement of several concrete blocks, and assisting with the installation of signs at Terragon Estates, taking trash barrels that were deep in the woods at Pratt Farms out, applying for and being awarded, and implementing the grant to create a sidewalk extension for the Nemasket River to the Pratt Farm, being involved in the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, Planning Grant, and coordinating a stormwater bylaw to better protect our town's resources, and always cooperating when a wetland application needs to be filed for work that EPW is doing." These are just some of the things that come to mind. "Mr. Peck and his staff are very quick to provide assistance and do so with a positive attitude. The Commission believes Mr. Peck and his staff should be commended for this." Thank you, that's what it says. So I agree with Ms. Cassidy. Chris Peck is a valued member of our town, and does a great job, him and his team. Anyone else? Now just break time. Phone? Okay. Should we go to the side? Mr. Chair. Mr. Givenoni.
As part of your letter that you just read, did you, I think there was mention of this new sidewalk that goes out to Pratt Farm. That is an extraordinary piece. As I come into town from out in Laboonies, where I live, and I look at that sidewalk that goes from Pratt Farm, it ties the downtown right over to it. Pratt Farm has just been in, it's an absolute diamond in the rough. And I don't want to call it rough because it's not rough because of the work that the Conservation Commission does to keep it up. But it's a diamond. And now that it's connected to the downtown, I think more people will have access, walking access. They won't have to get in their car and drive. They'll be able to walk right to it. And I think that that's a phenomenal piece. And that sidewalk went in so quickly. They came in, they knocked it out, it's in there, it's wide, it's handicap accessible, it's a phenomenal piece. And I appreciate when things like that get done and get done quickly. And that's a testament to what this town does. I looked at what you guys did, they did down in the downtown with the sidewalk work this past year. This past year, it just, it was like, you blinked and it was done. And it's a phenomenal thing that this stuff is going on in town. Where little pieces getting beautified here and there, but that tie-in to Pratt Farm, it really was a real piece that was needed because you could not walk. Careful, it was careful. You could walk, but it was treacherous at times trying to get over there. So the work that you guys are doing, the DPW, Mr. Nunes, everyone's putting their work together to, you know, really get that done. As someone who's, I've only been here 20 years, I appreciate the work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Ms. Fay.
I just think you need some fillers, so I'm going to fill for you.
Thank you for the downtime. We have five minutes. Go ahead.
It won't take me five minutes. But I do think that we, as a community, need to commend the Fire Department for their new website that they have posted. I thank you, Mr. Nunes, for providing that opportunity. It's very informative, gives insight on regulations and it's safety issues. And I think it's really important for the community to take the opportunity to observe it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Unfortunately, we have to kill four minutes, so bear with me. Ms. Fay, go ahead.
Diane Fay, 8309 Oak Point Drive. I'd just like to say, last year, right before the start of the COVID issues, the town ran a program with the Police Department, and it was a police academy for residents to go and learn about what takes place with our Police Department. And actually, Paula and I took part in it, some of the Selectmen did. It was a big group of us. And a week ago, Paula, a week ago, police officer drove up to the house, rang the doorbell, and it was like that University of New Hampshire deal where they said, "Anne, you graduated." But anyways, they brought us a certificate from the Police Department congratulating us on having completed all the classes and stuff, which was a nice, cute thing. But I think it was a marvelous program, and I think they should be encouraged, once everything settles back down, to do it again. Because I think a lot of us learnt a good bit about what our Police Department, and not only the Police Department, they had the EMTs up there one night with them. So it was a very good program.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. I was part of that program myself, and I definitely hope we do it again for all the residents. We also had CPR training, so it's something to add to it.
Right, come on. I really also want to acknowledge the fact that the library today put out, and I believe you posted it, Mr. Nunes, information about their summer reading program. And I think it's extremely important in light of the fact that we have had a challenging year across all communities, that, you know, people who are looking for things to do with their children, that they do go out, look at the library's website. There is a kickoff to their summer reading program. And I'm going to say it's June 21st, but it could be June 28. It's the Monday after school closes, and I think that could be the 21st. So it's something that the community should look at. How many more minutes do we have, Mike?
I think we're almost there.
You got one more minute?
Go ahead. Mr. Chair, my name is Brian Givenoni with the Middleborough Friends, and as of July 15th, we're kicking off our summer concert series again. Thanks to you guys approving that two weeks ago at your meeting. We're going to start getting back to normal. There'll be concerts every Thursday night on the Town Hall lawn. So they're free. Come down, bring your chairs, bring your blankets. It's just a great time. It'll be their 15th year because we missed the 15th year last year. So it'll be the 15th year of concerts on the Town Hall lawn. It's open to the public. It's a great event. So if you go to middlebarrefriends.com, you'll see some more, it'll bring you over to the Facebook page. It'll tell you all the events that are coming up. Once we post them, we haven't posted them yet. We're having a meeting actually tomorrow night to work on a couple more things. We have someone working on the bands locally here. So come on down, starting July 15th, and it's a free event. So hope to see you guys there.
Thank you, Mr. Givenoni, for the downtime. Mr. Chair. Mr. Demers?
I'd just like to add one last thing. I'd like to thank Megan Riley and the staff at Soul Homestead. My daughter's been attending their little program they have in there, you know, meeting all the farm animals. And I thought it was a really great program that they do over there. And I think that's something that should be noted, that they're doing a great job overall. And this week will be my daughter's last week of going to farm school. So it was just, you know, a great thing to say.
Thank you, Mr. Demers. 7:40, we have a continued hearing for earth removal, application filed by GAF Engineering Incorporated for the earth removal permit for property located Old Center Street, MAP 40, block 4916.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering. The applicant, Joel Ruda, is in attendance also this evening. The last public hearing, the board voted to draft a permit for review this evening. We received that last Thursday, and so I had redlined changes that we requested to be consistent with the plans that we had submitted, the plans that had been approved by the Conservation Commission. And so I guess we're here this evening just to see if we can move this forward. I'm sorry, I just could take one step back. I also just today submitted a phasing plan, which I have some smaller copies of if you'd like to see them. But I understand you may have PDFs. So in terms of the project phasing, Mr. Ruda would like to start adjacent to Route 44 and work into the property so that a tree buffer could be maintained for as long as possible. And so that the berm that we proposed to install to help out the neighbors with the noise would be the first element that would be constructed as part of the project, you know, other than clearing the trees. We have a couple extra copies.
Mr. Rogers, before we get too far into this, do you want to wait till we have a full board, or do you want to proceed with the three of us tonight?
Well, I looked, and to my knowledge, this isn't a special permit. It's a permit which would be a simple majority. So I guess, in your mind, is a simple majority. Is it now two out of three, or is it three out of five?
Two out of three. Two out of three, good.
Two out of three. So we would like to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the board have any questions? Good deal for now?
For now.
Okay.
Obviously, we have a lot of people here. I'm sure they have questions.
One to that next. Any member of the public have any questions on the earth removal permit? Please come to the podium and state your name.
Paula McDonough, 49 Upland Drive. At the last meeting, I felt that my questions were not satisfactorily answered. And I know the chairman person had said she thought all of the questions were answered. Several of us are here tonight because we have several concerns about the project. We have concerns about the noise, the dirt, our well systems, the fact that they're taking down all of this land and that there are going to be no berms left. I know they say there's going to be a berm of, I believe, six feet. That is a lot less than what we have currently. I'm concerned about my property values with this project. Several of the other neighbors are here tonight. Some of them haven't been involved in all of the conversations. So we did want to have some more dialogue on what this is going to do to our neighborhood. And I don't know if that's allowed. I don't know if you have answers for us on things like dirt, noise, our septic systems, are they going to be impacted by all of this? But personally, my number one concern is the noise factor. I hear 44 now with plenty of land and trees. And once they take that all down, I'm not an engineer, but I know I'm going to have more noise.
What other questions did you have that were not answered specifically?
Did I get all the answers?
I just want to make sure that we addressed. I just wanna make sure that we addressed them.
I know the Conservation Department said that they had no concerns. I don't know how much they studied, because I mean, there's a lot of wildlife in that area.
Quite the conversation at the first hearing. And there were questions and lots of answers. I don't know if you were here for that one?
I've been to every one so far. I even did the walkthrough at the property site. But since I'm bringing it up, I figure I might as well bring up everything.
Fair enough. Anyone else?
Kathleen Easterbrook, hi Neil. 270 Old Center Street, two questions. One, Mr. Aruda had mentioned the last time that you were gonna develop some sort of access to the cemetery. Is that on the plan, or?
It's in the draft permit, it's not connected on the plan.
Okay. Okay, so I imagine it's gonna be where, it's around where the two to one grade is not, right? Like more choice. Okay. And then the other question we had was hours of operation. Was that attached and I didn't?
The hours listed in the application say 7:30 to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Trucks not to be started or run before 7:30 AM, but not after 4:30. No operation is allowed Saturday, Sunday, town hall, or holidays.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to comment?
Joseph Aruda. Just to clarify two things that I heard. One, the path for the cemetery will be done when the project's finished. Obviously, we can't have anyone coming on the project once we start. But there is gonna be adequate access to the cemetery. Two, somebody thought there was a six-foot-high berm. It's not a six-foot, it's a six-foot-high berm on top of what is existing against the highway. So it'll be higher than what they're seeing right now. So hopefully that'll clarify.
Would you have any idea how tall that berm would be from the road?
Well, when you look on the elevations across 44, that's why we're starting with the phasing. I went over with our engineer. We wanted to start along 44, leaving a buffer of trees, taking the material down to elevation and putting the berm along 44. So when those trees come down, these, you know, the neighbors will not have wide-open access to the 44 layout. Which is gonna be on our property. And once I'm done, it's done forever. So they'll have more protection in the long run. Because right now, the way it stands, if 44 was to expand, if they had any thought of expanding, once the trees come down, the protection's gone. We're actually gonna put something in that's gonna be there permanently forever.
And I believe the order of conditions will be 100 feet from all property lines?
No, it's residential lines.
Residential lines?
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions on the Old Center Street project?
Yeah, I just have a question. You know, we did go down to the Fuller Street. Is this, I'd like to ask Mr. Aruda, is this gonna look like the Fuller Street project? That we did take a ride down to the Fuller Street. It's a big sand pit, period.
Well, it's not finished, it's gonna be a cranberry bog, in which I invite you guys to do it out.
Sir, I would ask you to address me, not Mr. Aruda.
Oh, all right, okay.
Joe, come to the podium.
My name is Joe Salamoni, and I live in Upland Drive. And we did take a ride down to Fuller Street, as Mr. Aruda suggested that we do. But a lot of our people on the street, some of them didn't even get notice of this project, and others haven't even gone down to Fuller Street to see it. So I think, in all fairness, anyone that's involved, they should go to Fuller Street and see what it's gonna look like before we go ahead with this thing. I mean, that's about all I have to say. The neighbors should really see it. You're proud of Fuller Street, and good, you know?
But we've given ample opportunity for people to go down. Everyone was notified. We have another list that was sent out, so I don't know what you're saying there. But the Fuller Street is not a sand pit, it's a cranberry bog, and it's finished. It's, right now, it's an active removal. And yes, I am proud of it. And this was not, this isn't even comparable to the size of Fuller Street. Fuller Street was a 60-house log subdivision for a 40-beat. We had to pay for all those. We came in from the bed and breakfast, which those people are ecstatic that we're, they're looking out of a cranberry bog and not 60 houses on a hill. So I think that we've tried to accommodate our neighbors on Fuller Street. I don't have one bad neighbor on Fuller Street at all. Not one complaint, not, not any.
There were only three or four houses on Fuller Street though, right?
No, it's like probably 10, 15 houses on Fuller Street. But Upland Drive was part of this farm originally. You know what I mean? So you're saying you're home on Upland Drive, but you're home on Upland Drive, this woods. And then it became a subdivision, right?
Yeah.
So I'm not putting houses with this plan over there. Not cutting all the trees and putting houses. I'm putting a farm to beautify the area, in my opinion. Maybe you guys don't want that, maybe you want houses, I don't know. But I went to the neighbors, I gave ample notice to conservation.
Oh, I realize you did everything right.
I asked everybody's opinion before I went down this road.
But as I said, some people never even got noticed.
And then they, I don't know where they live. If they're immediate Upland.
Yeah, there are people on Upland Drive that never got noticed.
Within 300 feet, with 300 feet, we send a notice, a certified notice.
Right.
That anybody, so to say that, I don't know where that comes from. All I know, this is our plan. We're proud of the plan. It's a small farm. When you drive out of your street, that's what you're gonna look at, is a farm. If no one wanted it, then I wish they would've spoke of it before. I went through all this engineering to make, and I accommodated. Everything that was at that list, he took notes. Everybody who put in, had some input in. We put a berm, we phased it for the neighbors. We're doing everything. I don't think it's fair to say Fuller Street's a sand pit. Because when the people go down on Fuller Street, they're very happy with what they've done.
Well, not the one we talked to.
I don't know who we talked to, but every single person in that area loves the Fuller Street project, so.
Really?
Yeah. If you have a name, I can go to them.
No, I wouldn't give a name if I had.
All I'm saying is, you can't say something in public forum that's not, that is not a sand pit.
What is it?
It's a cranberry. And those people are happy.
Gentlemen, address me please. Ms. Derry Wells?
Mr. Chairperson, Louise Derry Wells, 9 Chestnut Street. And I'd like to address this question to Mr. Aruda through you, sir. There are claims made that houses could have been put in this area with a cranberry bog that's gonna be developed. I'd like to know how many houses could reasonably have been developed with adequate frontage to actually create a development? I'd like to know if that was investigated, and how many houses could have been put in that area with adequate frontage to qualify for their construction?
Mr. Aruda, educated response?
I purchased this farm through Peter Beaton, which is a respected cranberry grower up in town. I didn't ever pursue houses. That Peter had a lot of sentimental value to this farm. The previous farmer's ashes were literally spread out on the cranberry bog. So Peter asked me to keep this, the cranberry bog. He obviously had good intent in that direction. He felt, he liked his neighbors, he's been there a long time. So did I ever say how many houses? No, I didn't, I didn't research that at all. That's not my forte. I'm in the sand and gravel business, and I have friends that are farmers. And the two of us make, I think, a good team to keep open space and keep Middleborough sort of farming community. So no, I didn't go say, this is how many houses I could jam in here. I'm sure you guys are all educated in seeing what contractors can do. That's not me. I did it through a friend saying he would like to keep it a farm. He'd like to keep the neighborhood in conjunction with that. The friend that I got the farm, it's just not feasible. It's too small of a farm for what it is now. So we can add to it, and we're gonna refurbish all the old bogs to get them up to snuff. I know that cranberries right now is down, but it will hopefully come back around when we start opening up more and more markets on it. So we are very confident that this plan is the best for the project, you know, that area. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairperson, through you to Mr. Aruda. I appreciate the last session that Mr. Aruda is very honest about his line of work, which is sand and gravel, and not cranberry bog development. But I would ask any such individual developing bogs in this matter, removing earth, to please not go into neighborhoods claiming that they could have houses instead of cranberry bogs or other such, I don't think these sorts of claims should be made without enough research into this so that you can tell the residents I can put X number of houses with adequate frontage. And that is truth in advertising for putting in a new bog. Because this is basically an earth removal project couched in cranberry bog terms, and these bogs should have been let go to go to seed and then go to wetland. That's what should have happened. And it's a shame that this was misrepresented, in my opinion. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Brian Givenoni, 89 Rocky Meadow. First off, I'm working a project right now that has 17 houses being built on a lot that's even smaller than the cranberry bog, which is 2.58 acres in another community, in fact. And it's unfortunate, but this is what happens. It's a beautiful parcel of land, and it puts 17 houses overlooking the bay in Kingston. But I want to address something that wasn't addressed that this young lady here addressed, which was asked about, which was truck traffic noise, et cetera. I live on Rocky Meadow Street, which if anyone knows it, there's a thousand contiguous acres of property, the old Elk Run Trust, that the bulk of it's owned by burn, sand, and gravel. But Mr. Aruda, I believe, had a little piece adjacent to it off Tispacoin Street. And he used to come out on to Rocky Meadow. And I did have a major problem with a truck. One truck that kept coming out. And I called the town manager's office prior to this, the town manager. But I called the town manager's office, they got the permit. The permit, they gave me a phone number, the phone number I called was actually him. I was surprised, you actually answered the phone, don't bend, so surprised. That doesn't usually happen. I told them what was going on, and that truck never worked on that road ever again. I was very surprised, he took the truck right off the road. The issue was how they were coming out of the bog and rolling out of the bog at a pretty good rate of speed on a blind curve as you come down that curve. And that was right, I lived right on that bad curve on Rocky Meadow. Not the Tispacoin one, but the other one south of the bog. But there's two bad ones. But I was surprised at what he did to address that. And I appreciate that. And if that's the type of thing that he continues to do, I don't know if he still does it, but if he does, then that's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Givenoni.
Ms. Caparis, 50, Upland Drive. Mr. Chairman, I haven't heard anyone mention dust or dirt. When you have a construction project, it raises a lot of things. There's eight trucks a day, five days a week. I, we have pets, we have young children in our neighborhoods. Dust and dirt is gonna be all over our houses. Has anything been approved as far as Mr. Aruda being able to water the area instead of it be all dust? You know, sometimes you wet it down, and then you move the soil, causes less dust, less pollution. Has anyone approached the pollution, air pollution or any quality?
In the order of conditions, there is a mention on dust control and everything that you're asking about. So condition number seven is all loaded vehicles must be covered to prevent dust and spilling contents, contents from spilling or blowing across the property. He also will implement dust control procedures to keep the dust from blowing into the road, the dirt into the road. And I believe he talked about paving in apron, if I'm not mistaken, in the beginning, to keep the dirt from tracking to the public road.
Okay, and he has a three-year plan with a one-year extension. Can the extension be extended?
I think it's a three and a one to start over. That's it. No, sir.
Did you say start over?
No, I apologize. It's three years, a one-year extension, and then he has to start from the beginning of the process if he wanted to. He'd come back before the board and start a holding permit. There's no more extensions.
Okay, and do we have any, let's say a couple of years into the project? Our houses are filthy, dirty, dusty, or whatever. What recourse do we have? Do we have to sue Mr. Aruda, sue the town? But how does that approach?
I don't think you'd have to sue anybody. I've been to plenty of Mr. Aruda's job sites through the years, just driven by them. He's very responsive, and I would hope, I don't wanna speak on his behalf, that if there was an issue, we could rectify that through the town with Mr. Aruda long before it became an issue with the terms.
Okay, I mean, everything I've heard, Mr. Aruda seems like a really nice man. But when these things occur, we have to go to Mr. Aruda, say, hey?
No, we would call the town manager's office.
Okay.
Is that correct, or DPW Crispack?
Okay, all right, thank you.
If there was a problem. And you can always call the selectman's office also.
Okay, thanks.
If you have any questions, if it wasn't happen, take your phone call also.
Paula McDonough again. Thank you. For clarification, he had just mentioned eight trucks a day. But if I remember correctly from our last meeting, it was eight to 10 trucks an hour.
There's definitely eight trucks per day. I'm not 100% confident on the per hour.
Mr. Chair. So, yeah, we submitted with our permit application a dust mitigation plan. And so he's required to do whatever amount of watering is necessary, you know, to keep the dust down and to keep it out of the air and to keep it out of the street, certainly. You know, the number of trucks per day is gonna be restricted by his equipment, and it's restricted by the permit in terms of the hours of operation. I think he said in the past that, you know, to the extent that he works from 7:30 to 4:30, it's normal working hours for most people. And, you know, I would certainly, it'd be best for the neighborhood if he can complete it within the three-year period or less. You know, he does not wanna be in a position to have to ask for an extension in three years. And as long as he can work within the limits of the permit, if he could finish the job in a couple of years or less than three years, that's what the goal would be.
So my question was, how many trucks a day?
So we absolutely could see six or eight trucks an hour.
Another question I have is with the extension of the bogs in this area, that's gonna increase the bog size probably about, I'm gonna say double. For the chemical treatment of a bog, or whatever they use for insecticides, I assume that that's now gonna double. How does that impact us from an environmental standpoint? And again, we all have wells in this neighborhood.
That's a great question. So the way the bog is currently today, there is no tailwater recovery pond. So any chemicals that are added to the bog can go out into the wetland and for however many years that bog's been there, that's the way they went. We're adding on our last phase a tailwater recovery pond. So any insecticides or pesticides that get put on, will, all the water will return back to that pond. So it won't be anything leaching out like it has for the years the bog's been there. So we're looking to be more environmental with the tailwater recovery pond. It's more of an environmental aspect and for the farmers more control. You know, you could put our spray and have a thunderstorm come in. So that's the reason why the DEB is really pushing the tailwater recovery ponds.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the Old Center Street project, personal referment?
Mr. Chairperson, Louise Derry Wells, 9 Chestnut Street. One last question. Is it in the order of conditions, sir, that you, that the contractor will restore or rebuild wells, dig new wells for those people whose wells dry up?
I do not believe it is, but correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rogers or Mr. Aruda?
Well, say it again, she's talking about wells drying up.
If one of the wells were to dry up, would you be responsible or would you address that? I believe it's not in order of conditions.
Well, right, because we don't expect to have any impact on the groundwater with this size of a project and with what we're doing. You know, the existing controls in terms of the flumes and the bogs and the reservoirs, those elevations are gonna be matched. You know, we're not taking water away from this land. I think it's gonna speed recharge of any rainfall, you know, certainly by taking the hill down and removing all those trees that are, you know, taking up water right now. So we don't believe this project is gonna have any negative impact on people's wells.
Mr. Moderator, if I might. Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Yeah. Under standard conditions, number 19, the approved plan shall be modified to include the general location of any monitoring wells on the site. So in many of these cases, monitoring wells are required. And in this particular one, it's listed as one of the conditions that there would be monitoring wells. I don't know if, if you folks plan to have monitoring wells. But my question is, how close are you to any shallow wells in the area that could possibly, under any conditions, be affected by this project?
I, I don't know the status of the wells for the homes on Old Center Street. I just don't know what they are.
Because it is very common to have a condition, as one is in here, relative to you providing monitoring wells, that would show where the water table is now and any changes. And that way you protect yourself against claims that, of course, you may have destroyed someone's well or, in effect, if something happens and, and it may prove that, in effect, what you've done could have an impact on someone's well.
But we, we have no baseline data. So I would say to you that other than the elevations of the surface water bodies that are on this property, if we agreed to put monitoring wells in tomorrow, that would be the start of the baseline data. And so then if we had a drought or, or some natural weather occurrence, there could be a misperception that, that this project has had an impact. You know, I'm familiar with exactly what you're saying, but it'd be nice to have five years of background data on, you know, the wells and the rainfall to go along with it. So I, I, you know, I don't see how that would be a fair evaluation if we only installed them now.
Yeah, I'm just real interested in how close people's wells are to this excavation, what you're going to do, and whether they're shallow wells. That's my issue, is how close they are to, to, I don't know if anyone knows that.
I have probably the shallowest well, and I'm not worried about it. My well is 25 feet deep. We dug it deeper, five feet from it, it went dry at one point. It was only 20 feet deep. We have the original well with the house, and we dug it five feet. So we are, and our house is on a hill above the road. And so I know it's a groundwater well. I don't know if everybody, anybody else has that, because most people have artesian wells now. But we have a groundwater well, and I'm not really worried about it.
As you well know, Kathy, the, the way the water flows, it doesn't flow level. So if you have a hill, the water table can follow the hill in any kind of configuration. So if you remove what is referred to as the overburden, in other words, you take away 30 feet of gravel, arguably, there could be an impact on someone's shallow well if it was close enough. And that's, that's what I don't know, whether there are any of these wells that are close enough to really be affected by this.
Yeah, I mean, we have the wetlands and the brook, the outflow from the bog before our well, so, but I don't know. I don't, I would think we'd have the shallowest well. And of all the construction from cranberry bogs that happened across 44, we haven't had any problems. So I'm not sure, I don't know how the groundwater flows there. You, you guys probably know from Workhead and the Cross Street well. I'm not that concerned about it.
I know we're not in the Workhead area there, because we already, we asked about that.
So it, so the water doesn't flow that way, then?
Probably not.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the, the water flows from Route 44 almost north, northwest towards Cross Street well, because the zone two shape goes down across Route 44 towards the downtown. That's how that works in that area. I have argued for many years with Mr. Madden of GAF, for years, about the soil overburden piece with shallow wells. I argued with Plymouth, I argued in many places. And what Mr. Rosenthal said is correct. When you remove soil, you remove that overburden, sometimes the water table locally will drop to a new freatic surface because of the capillary rise, et cetera, that goes on through soils. That being said, the water is traveling in a different direction than this project. This project gets its water more from the area around the south, southwestern. Because I've looked extensively at the plans and the property and the wetlands adjacent to it, et cetera. So that's where that kind of, that water's leveled out at versus coming directly from Old Center Street. Because I was looking at the same thing, especially at my own property in Rocky Meadow with all the digging at my house, I was concerned about the same thing. But I think that the provision that you were talking about, which is that, that one, even if you put one observation well to see what's going on today, you'd, you'd at least have a, to say, I don't have data from 20 years is not the reason not to collect data, he's not collecting data today. Wouldn't be a bad thing to have a shallow well there, maybe, and take some measurements, dunk it once a month, maybe, just to make sure you have a, just a baseline. So if something does occur, you'll know that it dropped. But as the resident said, they've had it go dry in the past during drought season. It has happened. Those things do happen. But that's a great piece that is in that provision within the permit.
Okay. Any further comment?
So, Mr. Chairman, might I ask the applicant whether they would be willing to put in a monitoring well?
If it's a, Joe Aruda, sorry. If it's a concern and we can find a shallow well, I have no problem, I don't obviously even want to do harm to the neighbors. So if there's an area that somebody says, you know, I'm concerned about my well, one of the houses on the top, I have no problem doing, I, I mean, I'm in business to, to be able to stand in front of you with a little bit of pride. And, and when I get done with this project, I hope that these neighbors realize that I was a good neighbor and I, I look forward to being that. You know, I didn't start the business just to make money and move on. I think I've earned the reputation of, of doing it. So, yeah, I have no problem. If you guys have a concern, if we find that there's a concern with a shallow well, I would put a margin well in. But I, to me, if there's a problem, I'm going to be that guy that's going to answer the phone and, and find out what the problem is. You know what I mean? If their well went dry, I'm going to do everything I can to, to help them out. I'm not going to walk away from it. But I can truthfully tell you, and I don't want to pass the buck on, but on this project, I'm not doing that type of, we've had projects where you're coming up against and, and on, on Rocky Meadow Street. There was a pit across the street that drained, I'm trying to think of a man, just to the left of our, his well went dry. And it wasn't, it was not our company that was doing the water hole, but we helped him out at that time. We became great friends, we're still friends today. So I'm not going to pass the buck on anything. A monitoring well is, is to me, is, is a point where we're trying to not take blame for something. If one of my neighbors needs a hand, I'm going to help them. And I say that right in a public meeting, I have no, there's no qualms with what I'm doing.
Mr. Chairman, I had one other question. Relative to this berm on 44 versus the trees that are currently there?
Yep.
What kind of noise suppression would be offered by that berm relative to what's there now? So how much or how little will the noise increase when you've done putting in that berm of the noise from 44?
Well, my goal is to decrease the noise, because right now it's all tall pines. There are scrub pines on the bottom, which right now are pretty much holding back some of that noise. We're going to put an earth berm and then put plantings and seedlings of the pine trees. So hopefully, time this is all said and done, it'll be better than what it is today. Right now, that noise in the winter, when needles fall off, that noise kind of travels up and over the hill, the way it runs, almost like water. We're hoping to end it with this earth berm so the noise actually deadens. So I'm hoping to have a better sound barrier than what's currently there today. And it is, you know, the, the height of it, I, I think that it's, we try to show people what we have at the edge. So I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're going to do it. And if it needs a little something more, I'll go higher. I'm, I'm going to do it till, you know, we're, we're satisfied that I've made every attempt to, I mean, I can't stop 44 where there's a marsh. I showed one of the neighbors, some of the noise comes from a marsh up farther. Unfortunately, they, we can't fill those in. Trish would be pretty upset with me. But as far as my, my area, I'm going to, I'm going to do everything I can to, to deaden that noise.
Okay. Well, it certainly sounds reasonable to me, and you certainly sound like you're willing to work with the neighbors. I, I also would like to assure folks that we do have a pretty tight control of these orders of conditions, and we have a person, which is Chris Pack, actually, the DPW superintendent, goes out every three months and checks on this project to make sure that they're actually keeping to the plan. And we will incorporate this phased plan as part of the orders of conditions so that you, in fact, abide by that. So, you know, you're making me feel fairly comfortable that you're going to do what you say you're going to do and that it's going to work out okay. I certainly hope so, because, you know, it's really important to the folks who live around here.
Well, exactly. And that's why I have done five or six pretty good-sized earth removals in the town of Middleborough. And I don't think that our town can say this guy didn't finish what he said he was going to do. And every one of them, we, we go, I try to go above and beyond. And, and it's important to me that the neighbors, you know, you're always going to have somebody that, or, or somebody in a truck. We've, we've seen that. But if someone calls me and it's a legitimate, I mean, you hate to, to not have, you know, send a man home for an opinion, but I personally go out on those roads and park on the sides of the street and, and control the speed. You don't get town of Middleborough complaining about my truck speeding. I, I control that. I don't need to put more on the police department than they already have. I, I'm on the side, and if they see me policing it, and, and if they have a concern, my number is on that side. They don't have to bother you. You guys have a lot going on. This is going to be, I think, an asset to the town, because we're not taking that land and turning it into something other than what, to me, it could be or should be.
Thank you, Mr. Aruda.
Thank you.
Any questions, sir?
Sure.
Good. Neat. Most of them. Any further comments or questions from the public?
Another question, please.
Thanks, sir.
I'd just like to know how long the Fuller Street project has been going on?
I don't have that answer. Mr. Aruda, would you like to answer that?
No, you said I should ask you. I'm asking. How long have you been on Fuller Street?
The Fuller Street project, I think it's going to be, we went with a four-year, or three-year permit, one-year extension, and then we re-upped for another three years. That's quadrupled the size of this.
Right. I understand. My point is, after the three years and the one-year extension, when does the bog actually go in?
The bog should be in on, on this project on, on the third year it'll be in. This is a very small project, and I know you're excited because it sounds like a big number, but in, in my world, that's what we, all our men, that's what we do.
No, I, we just don't want, you know, we don't want to look at, not a sample, we don't want to look at what you're doing for 10 years.
Yeah, no, and I understand that. But we control, we control the speed of, of a project by our neighbors. So I literally, with, with the economy, you could, we could have got Fuller Street done in three or four years, but absolutely made a nuisance of our neighborhood. And I, we, you know, most of you, the selectmen are new to this, in the very first hearing, they asked me, could you do this in, in three years? And I said, absolutely not. And I gave the neighbors, and the neighbors stood up at that meeting, and they said, we would rather him do it the way he's always done it, and, and which is my Fuller Street, Tispacun, Rocky Meadow, all these projects that I've done, I don't, we could get this done in a year.
Okay, it's fine. I just needed an answer. So basically, you can look at a bog going in the third year.
The third year, the bog will be in.
And the sand excavation will be done.
The sand, the way we have it permitted, yes. The, the way we have it permitted, three years, sometimes with the water holes, because you're going down, it takes a little, you try to hit it, you have to hit the water holes in, in the right season. We can't pump water down from the water hole if the cranberry grower needs to keep the rest of the crop going. So that is a season thing, and that's really just a time, sometimes you, you hit it and you can get it into the winter. We'd like to dig them in the winter where it doesn't affect, but sometimes in the winter you have to put ice out. So it, it depends on the season, to be perfectly honest with you. I don't foresee us having to do a four-year.
Okay.
One-year extension.
I was just curious, because I thought that other one was going longer than...
Oh, yeah, no, it did. It did. But it, it was, it was, you know, a combined effort between us and our neighbors to...
And they still don't have a bog there, right?
The Beetons are putting in the bog next year. This year it's just too hot. I mean, we, they could put it in now, but they're going to probably do it in the fall or early spring. And that really depends on, on their schedule. We, we turn that farm over to the Beetons, which own the cranberry bog next. I don't keep the cranberry bogs because it's, that's how the partnership works, that they...
It's not that it's not profitable, right?
Well, it's, it's not that, those cranberry grows, it's a science. I'm not into that. I can barely keep track of everything that I have to keep track of. I don't need to go and look for bugs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the public? Okay. If the board feels it has enough information and wants to move forward, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. At this point, it's the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd move that we grant this permit and make the phased plan part of the order of conditions incorporated within the order of conditions so that the project will follow the plan.
Second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? In public? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Aruda and Mr. Rogers? We've done everything else. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion, can I get a second? Neil, can I get a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion adjourned.